Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the September meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees. I hereby call us to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, one law, one law.
Okay, let's do the roll call, please.
Trustee Gagani. Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
President Topic.
Here. First, thank you again, everyone, for coming. First on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, which consists of the August 27, 2025 regular meeting minutes, the August 2025 financial reports, September 2025 invoices, and the transfer from library fund to library capital replacement fund.
I'll make a motion to pass the Consent Agenda. A second.
Okay. Can we get the roll, please?
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
President Topic.
Yes. Next up is public comment. See a lot of familiar faces. I think everyone knows the rules. Got up to five minutes. Try to keep it to three minutes, keep it civil, and the floor is open for anyone who would like to speak. Okay, this is getting a little weird. But I am... Okay, well, I will just remind... Oh, okay, very good. Come on up.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, no, sorry, I'm really...
Not at all.
Mary Kay Holmes, we've been a resident for 30-plus years in Downers Grove, and I just wanted to thank you for having the human books. We were able to take advantage last year and hope to this year, and it was just... It was some of the subjects we were familiar with, so... But it was nice to be able to read them, and then there were some that we weren't familiar with, and it was just a nice opportunity to speak to people that are books that you wouldn't normally speak to. So I think it's wonderful, and I encourage everybody to go. And I also want to thank the people, the books, for allowing themselves to be so open and responsive to all of our questions and everything. So I thought that was fabulous last year, and I was really happy to see it again. Coming up Thursday, I think... Let's go with Thursday.
October 2nd, correct?
Yeah, next Thursday. Yeah, next... Right, right, we're moving tomorrow, yeah. So anyways, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Connie Nicholson, and I love the library. I live right downtown, and I go there frequently, probably more often than I should, but I do enjoy it. I have a couple of questions, and I'm sure that I will not get answers right away, but I have a couple of questions. I am concerned or interested as to why you need a social worker at the library. That's a big interest to me because I happen to know that the social worker here in the village is wonderful and does wonderful things and has a lot of expertise and knowledge about different aspects in the community. And I'm also very interested as to why you have a food pantry or food bank kind of area because there are two incredible food banks within walking distance of the library. So I'm curious about those two things, and I've been going there... We moved here in 2008, so I've been going there frequently, and I just find it very curious as to why those are there, and what is the goal? What are you looking at? What are you trying to achieve? I would like to know more about that for both the social worker and the food pantry. Thank you.
Okay. For the record, there is no such thing as coming to the library too much, so feel free, everyone, come as much as you'd like. Any other comments? Okay, I will move us on then to trustee comments, and we'll also have an update on the executive director search. Do you want to start there, or are you going to someone else to start?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, library director search. I don't have a super substantive update. We're just kind of working through finalizing the questions for our public survey, just making sure that they gather information that's truly going to be helpful. So we're just trying to streamline it into just three or four questions that we can send out, and I'm working with not only our search firm but also our marketing team to make sure that is distributed in a way that will reach as many people as possible. So please keep an eye out for emails from the library, from signage at the library, social media posts directing you to a website to answer our survey so we can get to know what the public's looking for in our new director. We're also just kind of finalizing a stakeholder meeting. Those are people in the community, you know, our partners with the public schools, partners with the foundation and the village council and others in the community, just to kind of get a separate meeting with them, just to kind of pool their ideas and kind of what they have found successful working with our current director and what they would want in the future. And so things are moving along really well. We'll start kind of getting into tightening up the schedule in terms of, you know, when everything's publicized, interviews, all that good stuff. So we kind of are in a little bit of a slow period right now, but it'll start kind of ramping up really soon in like November and December. So that's that. And then I'll just quickly pivot into a quick kind of thing I wrote up because I don't always do well on the fly, so I just wanted to say a couple of things. In light of today's devastating news coming out of Texas with the shootings at the ICE detention center, I just wanted to remind people how dangerous hateful talk about marginalized groups, including undocumented people, really is. When people are treated as less than human, it makes tragedies like this more likely to happen. That's why public places like libraries are so important. They need to stay safe and welcoming spots for everyone, no matter who they are or what they believe. Libraries can help bring people together, offer support, fight against hate by being spaces where everyone feels respected and included. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to reinforce my personal commitment to making Downers Grove Public Library a welcoming space for our community specifically. So, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions on the trustee search before we go to more comments? Bottom line, like, we're well on track.
Yes, yes. And I... Yeah, I mean, again, we're very thankful to Julie for giving us a lot of lead time, and so we have time to, you know, really research things and make it as cohesive and fluid a system as possible, so, yeah.
Excellent. Dave, I'm going to call on you next, if you have anything. If not, no worries.
Yeah, a couple of quickies. First of all, just piggybacking on what you just commented on. I don't exactly how to phrase it, but I think my politics are pretty well-known, but I want to say strongly that there is no place for violence in politics from any perspective. There's no place for violence in life from any perspective. And I don't think I'm going to say much more than that. It's not been a very good week. But it was a good day. Today, I attended the annual luncheon of the Downers Grove Economic Development Corporation. I'm sure that sounds very exciting to you, but I attended with Julie Milovec and a couple of hundred of my other close, personal friends. It's a gathering by the Downers Grove EDC of Downers Grove governmental and organizational and business leaders of the community for once a year to get together and talk about the economics of Downers Grove and to hear from the Economic Development Corporation about what's happening in the Downers Grove economy. The point I wanted to make, though, is today is I was wearing a name tag that said, "Dave Humphries, Downers Grove Public Library." A lot of people already know me, but people who didn't saw that name tag. I was struck by the number of people during the break and after the meeting who came up to me to just say, "We love our library." I was really struck by that. I mean, these are the CEO of this and the president of this and a board member of this, and so I just felt very good about that, and I think that our staff should feel very proud of that.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, thank you. This week, I had the honor of getting to attend the in-service, the staff in-service, and it was wonderful to sort of realign that our values on being a space for everyone to grow, play, and learn, our commitment to diversity, our commitment to being a welcoming environment, and I want to commend the staff again for these incredible numbers for the summer reading, the 671 adults, 143 teens, almost 3,000 little people, kids, and 48 staff members... I should probably say, kids. Children! And 48 staff members. It's phenomenal, and it says so much more than those numbers about our library and how important our library is and how valuable our library is. So, yeah, and everything you said. Just, again, proud to be a trustee of such an incredible library.
My turn. Good evening. I echo what other trustees said. Appreciate your comments. I don't think I want to address political violence. I did make a public comment at the village council meeting last Tuesday, and so if you have my thoughts around that, you can watch that. So I mentioned a couple of things. One, I was out of the country at the time the America Revolution exhibit was here, but it's really cool that we had that exhibit. It was only select libraries that got to our public spaces that got to exhibit that. I'm sure it was awesome, but I didn't get to see it. And then, secondly, the foundation is having our after-the-dark event next Saturday, early October. So I bought tickets. I look forward to supporting them and being there. That's it.
Okay, I'll echo what pretty much everyone has said, what everyone has said so far. I also had the pleasure of attending the in-service. I thought it was a great event. I spoke about AI, which is part of my regular professional work. It was just, it was the first opportunity I had to just see all the staff at once, and it was just really great to see how many dedicated people who really take their jobs very seriously and understand how important their jobs are, I think, now more than ever in the world that we're currently living. And so I just thanked Julie and thanked the staff for having me, and it was a really great, really great experience. I think, Nathan, you mentioned the October... Did you mention the foundation event? Okay, so I'll just add onto that a great big thank you to the foundation for all that they do to support all the work that we do here at the library. I'm going to address your questions a little bit, ma'am. I don't have all the answers right now. As to social worker, I think it was about a year ago that we voted on that, and we had a very robust discussion about why and people's perspectives. I would... That should all be archived on our website, so I want to say it was maybe May, I don't know, June, July sound about right? So, yeah, June or July of last year, you'll see a whole lot of discussion about why we thought a social worker was a good idea, and so I would encourage you, take a look at that, and please come back if you'd like to hear more. And I think, Julie, is our social worker coming to present in an upcoming meeting as well?
Yes, eventually.
Okay, so we have every meeting, we have someone from a different department come and talk about the work they do. There will be a future meeting about the social worker, so you'll be able to hear directly, if you'd like, from the social worker about the work that they do and why it's important. The food pantry, I think I just learned, it's sort of extra from a community garden, so I don't think we're trying to act as a food pantry. It just sort of came to us, and so it's been made available. Julie, I think I have that right, but you'll tell me if I don't. All right. So I do not want to get too deep into sort of national political issues, but it has obviously been a very tough stretch of time for political violence, and it has been a very tough time for the First Amendment in the last stretch of time, and I am deeply troubled by that. But I want to focus just on us as a local library and what we do about that. You know, our core principles are freedom of speech, the freedom to read, there being a welcoming place for people of all viewpoints, and a place where you can learn new things. And I think, I know that we should be doubling down on that right now because I think that is more important than it has ever been for libraries to continue to serve that role. So I'm not going to preach, and I'm not suggesting anyone else here is preaching, but I'm not going to preach about, you know, politics or kind of issues that go beyond our library. But personally, I think that if people would maybe spend a little less time on social media and cable news and come down to the library and find a book that you think you couldn't disagree with more, that you think this person is, their views are terrible, I don't believe in any of that, and check out that book and read it and see what you think. And I think if people would do that, we might be a whole lot better off if we could try to understand different perspectives a little bit better than I think we're currently doing as a society. I think that's a thing that we as a library can do about this and will continue to do about this. So that's what I have to say on that subject, and that's what I have to say, period. So I will move us on to the next agenda item, which is library director's report.
Yes, thank you. So just to real quick, piggyback off, yes, the social worker conversation was part of the budget conversation for the 2025 budget, and so those meeting videos and all of the board packets are still available on our website, dglibrary.org/bord. You'll find it there. Only the first couple show, but there is a little link to open up the rest of them, so you'll be able to find that. The cupboard is our Little Free Pantry, and that is actually... One of the reasons we started that is because those food pantries that are available in the downtown are not open as often as the library is, and we were finding folks who were looking for food at times when those pantries and the community kitchen and the other services available were not open. And so that is supported by the public and by donations, and so the library staff fills it, but it is all donation-based. As Matt alluded to, one of our local churches has a community garden, and so this time of year, there is also fresh produce available there, and the third Saturday of every month, yes, the third Saturday of every... Or third weekend of every month is when our social work team, the social work interns or social worker or combination thereof, is collecting donations in the library for the Little Free Pantry. So now I'll go on to my actual scripted remarks. Again, Barnali kind of stole my thunder on the summer reading statistics, but it was absolutely amazing. We had a 20% increase in kids' program attendance this summer. So that's, I know... So that was over and above our summer reading club participation, which also saw a similar increase in the kids. So absolutely fantastic. Kudos to our whole staff for their hard work on all of that. Updating you on our Zero Eyes installation, so that is our AI-monitored weapons detection software that we had a number of conversations about with the board of trustees, and ultimately last month, the board decided to move ahead with that. The installation is complete. We thank you to the Downers Grove Police Department for working with us on that installation, and it has been calibrated. It is ready to go. I will tell you that the notifications are super fast. When they were calibrating it, when they opened the case to take out the weapon to calibrate the machine, as soon as they opened it, within seconds, Ian was getting text messages on his phone that a weapon had been detected. So it was really, really fast. They did this early in the morning before the library was open. I was in the shower at the time. I forgot that there was a text message component to this, and so my phone was blowing up, and I get out of the shower, and it is 13 messages from this software about what they had seen. So we will be going live with that. We're anticipating that for Monday, the 29th. The training for staff is actually tomorrow, and we will have our new signage is ready to go. We will have temporary signs first because the new vinyl that goes on the doors is not in yet, but it will reflect that we have AI-monitored weapons detection. And then, last and unfortunately most importantly, I wanted to give the board a heads-up about some computer needs that, why is it that every year, as soon as we finish the budget, all of a sudden some like big-ticket item comes up or something rises to the top that we have planned and it's sooner than expected? So our Windows 11 upgrades on older PCs, for those of you following along, you know that Windows 10 is no longer being supported, so everything had to go to Windows 11. Well, what we're finding is that a lot of these older PCs that were technically able to be upgraded to Windows 11 are now starting to fail because they really aren't powerful enough to handle that software. So they will need replacement sooner than expected. So what we will be asking in an upcoming meeting, October or November, we're not sure yet, just wanted to give you the heads-up, we will probably be asking for... To be able to charge the hardware to the library capital replacement fund, and then we'll just, we'll use the funds in our regular operating to work with our IT support consulting firm to deploy all of those. The total number is somewhere around 80 PCs, and we do anticipate to offset that cost. We will do some value engineering in the furniture replacements that are already worked into the 2026 budget for the library capital replacement fund. So unless there are any questions about that, we'll move on to the next fun bit of the agenda, and that is Melissa Willer, our Circulation Services Department Manager. Melissa is one of our two newest managers at the library. She's been with us for all of six months.
For six months.
And she is going to talk to you about the circulation department and how they really are the face of the library because those are the happy-smiling folks at the checkout desk that you see when you come in.
Certainly are. So, yeah, circulation. We're often the first people that somebody coming into the library sees. We get the, you know, standard questions. Where is that? How do I do that? So we spend a lot of time doing what we call basic, like directional reference, but also we check people out, we solve problems, you know, missing or damaged books. Hopefully, you know, everyone, we try to, as we say in our meeting just the other day, try to find a way to get to yes. We don't like to charge people, so we try to find ways to make it work for everyone. But right now, my department is currently at 35 staff members. We are the biggest department in the library, but you wouldn't know it because typically we have one or two people out there. We're kind of like an iceberg, you know, just very small on the top, and what we make all the magic happen in the back room. So when we look at circulation, we obviously, customer service being out front is a big part of it, and that's our patron services. And that's been, since I've come on board, one of our biggest areas that we've been looking at, which is how to improve patron services. And one of the things that recently got wrapped up that was through SWAN was an online registration tool. We had online registration that started during COVID, which was limited to electronic resources, so you could get a e-card to check out eBooks, e-audiobooks. SWAN recently finished up the project. We were one of the beta sites. Now you can register for a library card online, and it's a full-service card. So you don't get a physical card, you get an electronic number. They can come in and get a physical card if they want it, but this makes it easier for this to be kind of a spur-of-the-moment thing. You know, if you're searching for a book and it comes up on OCLC WorldCap that our library has it, our residents can go, "Oh, I can get a library card," and they can get it and put the book on hold, put it in the locker, and so there's not like, "Oh, well, now I have to find time to stop at the library." So I think it'll be beneficial to us in the long run. We're also looking at ways to integrate that into the practice at the front desk. Registration is one of the slowest processes we have to do right now, and the online system has built into it proof of identity using a data, a national database, which can match names, addresses, and phone numbers. Also, it's able to determine whether an address is a Downers Grove tax property. So if they, it will say, "Yes, you are who you say you are, and you live in Downers Grove. Here's your library card." But if they're not, say they're over in Westmont, it'll automatically give them a Westmont card. If they already have a card in the system, it'll remind them that they already have a card in the system, and it will give them their number. So it's very, makes the whole process much easier. We are also looking at remote registration. The marketing communications has been out this past month for the library card signup, and they have been using the online tool. So they basically have a QR code. People can stop when they're on their way to the train. If they don't have a library card, they can scan the code, walk away, register, and get that while they're sitting on the train. So I think this is a very neat kind of process, and that's leading us to looking at some of our card types and the whole process for registration, which we're trying to streamline. We are also looking into more options for mobile circulation. Right now, as you are probably aware, we have self-checks. Those are getting a little old, but they're still functional. But there are some newer systems out there. One of them is our online app, which is Aspen, allows for what they call Scanning Go, which is a self-checkout on your phone. So you can have your cards stored on your phone in Aspen, and you can check out your books yourself using your phone. And once again, we are a beta site. We are currently testing it behind the scenes because there's been some issues. So that hopefully will be out maybe soon, end of the year, so that gives people another way. And then, looking at the other side of it down the road, there is also a version of the app which allows people to check their books in using their phone. So they can, and that's a geofence, so they'd have to be in the library, they can scan them in, and then they could just put them into the hole for the sorter. And this is important because sometimes there's a delay with books coming back, you know, things are backed up or something. So for people who want to know right away that their books are returned, they can scan them in, get that instant, your books have been returned, and then go about their day and not question that later on. So that brings us to the big beast question, which is the AMA or the sorter. As you know, we have an RFP out for that. The bids are due back tomorrow. I'm so excited. Three of them had already come in. I was, I'm anticipating probably four. Three of them already, I did not open them because we said 8 o'clock tomorrow. So that, our sorter is 10 years old. It's been a great workhorse, but the last time it broke down, it took a lot, a week or two to get apart. It is really very critical. You know, we serve about 30,000 items a month. Is that correct? Yeah?
A million every year.
A million every year. I mean, that is a lot to be handled, and the sorter allows us to cut down the number of touches. And this is important for speed, getting the books checked and getting them back on the shelf so new people can get them, filling holds. It's also a repetitive motions, you know, so cutting down on the number of times people have to pick up books and move them is good for the staff, too. So we're waiting to see what that is because it is quieter, it is so much quieter, it's faster, and it's got a lot of new bells and whistles. like multiple items. So right now people have to stand at the hole and you feed one in and you wait the light turns green. The new one, basically you can take a handful and put it in the hole and walk away. And the machine does the sorting and the scanning behind the scenes. So that's going to be a nice thing, especially for, as I say, our parents coming in for all those programs for our toddlers and they want to return the books and the kids just, they want to go have fun in the kids department. They don't want to stand there and wait for mom to return all the books. This makes that process faster. We're also looking into RFID reader wand. We have not done an inventory in a number of years. So we are looking at doing an inventory for, again, that helps that we know what's on the shelf. So patrons, we don't like it when a patron comes in and they're like, oh, I want this book and we can't find it on the shelf. It's, you know, we can still probably get it on interlibrary loan, but we'd rather know what we have. And then our fast, the final thing we're working on is our staff scheduling. We recently adopted staff scheduling software. My assistant manager Sandy was scheduling those thirty five people with basically paper and pencil on an Excel spreadsheet. It took up a lot of time, it was difficult to change, difficult for swapping. So we've recently adopted and we've been kind of test running it for the last few months. And it's been really good. So those are the big things we're doing. And all of, as I said, all of these kind of are in support so that are, we are more efficient. So our patrons have a better experience. We are improving accuracy and speed. Do you have any questions?
I will say that Aspen program, that sounds so cool. Like it's like a wallet. And I know that my teen who's always like, where's my library card? Well, now it can just be on there. That's amazing.
It's, it's right there. Yes.
How many, a full time and part time do you have? You might have said it and I didn't.
So it is counting me five full time and the rest, the other thirty are part time. And it's days, evenings, weekends. It's a. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do for us. Okay, we're on to new business. Our first item is an action item, Library Services Policy Update. So let me see if we have a motion in a second and then we can talk about it.
A second.
Get it up here.
Okay, I will make a motion to talk about library service.
Whatever we just said, Library Services Policy Update.
I will second the motion to approve.
I forgot that's right here.
I think I screwed it up. Usually Julie kind of walks us through what it is first.
That's quite all right.
Quite all right.
Been a long day.
So this is actually an update. It's primarily to our library card section of the Library Services Policy. The main thing is changing the name and some of the parameters of what had been our restricted use cards. Are the new name will be Residents in Transition. And those cards are for two purposes. We use them for our shelter, our unhoused population in town and for teens who cannot get a parent to come in and sign for a library card. So they have to be over thirteen, they have to have a student ID. And we are proposing to change the number of items that that card type can check out from two to five. We have had almost no loss from these types of cards and we've had them for over five years now. And to expand the Resident in Transition Card for our unhoused population, in the past, those cards were for shelter users in Downers Grove only. And the shelter staff would confirm that they were shelter users in Downers Grove. What we would like to do is to expand the, the process to allow our library social worker to confirm that this person does not have a fixed address but is residing in some way in Downers Grove. This will allow us to offer cards to people who are maybe living in their car but spending the nights somewhere in Downers Grove. People who are couch surfing with friends or family and do not have that fixed address. And so utilizing our social worker, we will be able to, to confirm that those folks are indeed within that unhoused population that reside in some way in Downers Grove. And then finally, some clarify, couple of clarifications to the Cards for Kids, the Public Act that allowed all children under the age of eighteen to receive a free library card at, as long as we participate in this, in the non-resident card program, which we have done for many, many years. And also calling out the free cards also for disabled veterans that was in that same piece of legislation. So that's really just an update to bring us in line with those. And also a nod to our intergovernmental agreement with District fifty eight that allows us to get cards to all of the students in District fifty eight.
Good. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, then I think we can vote.
Trustee Gagani? Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
President Topic?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next two items are discussion items, so we won't vote on these tonight. We will look to vote on them next month. But they're the kind of things I think makes sense to just kind of get out there, talk about a little bit, allow the public to give us any comments at the next meeting before we vote on them. So the first is a, not exactly policy, but a sort of principles document on artificial intelligence in libraries. Kate, I forget, were you going to present this or was I? No, okay. So Kate Owling-Gott is our Technology Services Manager, right? Yes, very good. And Kate and I and Ed Bromiel, who works on Kate's staff, spent a lot of time thinking and talking about kind of do we, do we need some directional kind of document around AI in the library? Both from the perspective of internal use of AI and sort of external programming about AI? And, and the sort of broader question of, you know, as, as AI becomes more prominent, what is the role of libraries in a, in a world like that? So what, if you give me one moment, I just got to. Sorry to be anticlimactic. This must be Windows ten.
Are you using AI right now?
I actually, I'm just an AI avatar. I'm not actually, I'm not actually a person. I know this thing back and forth, but I wanted to just kind of look. So, so just in, in broad strokes, as I said, this is not sort of a operational bunch of rules kind of a document. In fact, one of the principles that we, that we sort of settled on was that we shouldn't really be doing that. I mean, there's a few things where we need to, like you can't put patron confidential information into ChatGPT and ask it questions like that kind of those. There's some things like that you can't do around HR. You know, there's a lot of concerns about HR written reviews and HR written self reflections and AI based sort of HR decisions. And we're kind of steering away from that at this point and maybe forever. So the idea being, I think, our staff, no one needs to use AI. And there's some jobs where you don't need to use AI at all. But there's other jobs where you need to kind of get a little bit familiar because part of our job is going to be to help educate the public, to provide resources and program that will help people to navigate AI issues. People I think are concerned about their teenagers and younger children and using AI. Like that's a thing that we can maybe provide some programming and materials that will be helpful to people. You know, jobs are changing radically. As a library, it's part of our job to help people have the resources necessary to, to navigate those things. And so part of that is, I think, to have an environment where people are free within some bounds to, you know, to use AI. People who know me know I'm like really skeptical of AI. I'm not a fan. But, you know, I don't think we can just say, well, we don't like it, so we're just going to pretend it doesn't exist. I don't think we're doing our job as a library if we were, if we were to do that. So just sort of at a, at a high level, that's what this document is attempting to do, is just set forth some principles about what the role is of libraries in our view regarding AI and some, some general principles about internal use of it. We also have some materials about the potential harms because I think that is also part of our job as we make decisions internally about what we should or shouldn't do. And also as we help to inform the public and make resources available to the public, part of that is understanding, well, what's the water and the electricity that your ChatGPT prompt uses? You know, what are bias issues and equity issues and digital divide issues? And a whole list of things that are, that are sketched out in this document to help start thinking about those things as we look to put together programming and materials to help kind of meet this upcoming challenge. So at a high level, that's, that's what we've done. Big thanks to Kate and to Ed for, for doing a lot of great work on this. I was really, it was a great experience. I really enjoyed the conversations. You know, we had discussions with other staff and really it was a great learning experience. So with that, I'll stop talking and I'll see if anybody has any comments or questions or thoughts on, on any of this. Again, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but I wanted to get a discussion started.
I just wanted to say thank you to you and Kate and Ed for even just spearheading this. I think it's kind of one of those things that you just don't even realize you, you need. Or, or there's a responsibility for public libraries to have some sort of statement or, or philosophy or something on this. And, you know, I think, you know, highlighting the environmental impact is huge. I, I didn't personally know about it until, you know, recent years, well after I had started using AI to help me, you know, sound smarter. So I just appreciate you guys for putting the, the effort and the, you know, the foresight to kind of pioneer something like this. So I appreciate that.
Just, just, just a comment. Thank you for being proactive on, on bringing this up before it becomes a major issue for us to at least prepare us with some of the issues. An example is a statement in the, in the report that you prepared about bias. I'm just going to read this because it hit me pretty fast here. AI relies solely on data fed into it by humans, including all of the biases held by their human authors. And it does not have the ability to transcend that information. If prejudiced information is fed into the data, dataset, prejudiced information will be a part of the output. In a little different world, when I was learning computers, we had a term, a term called garbage in, garbage out. And this is a contemporary version of that. So, but to remember, AI is information that already exists. We just have to be careful that we select the information that we're basing AI's decisions on. And that therein lies that the devil's in the details is, is often said. So I appreciate this report. I'm going to be reading it and thinking about it more and more, I think.
I had the same comment as you and I, it made me think about encyclopedias when I was a kid and like who wrote the encyclopedia and who wrote history books? And I think about that, like that bias, like I didn't think about it in terms of AI for some reasons that I don't know why I didn't think about it. So I appreciate you including that. And I also had never heard hallucinations, like I, I didn't even know that was like a term. So I learned a lot of words that I didn't know. So thank you and thank you and Ed for, for doing this because I think we all learned a lot, those of us especially who don't live with this one. I'm terrified of AI. So it was good for me to read this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Matt, Kate and Ed. I appreciate it. I have three substantive questions and then one formatting one. I'm a management consultant, okay? Formatting, sorry. Okay, so there's a statement that says libraries should not include AI-written content in their collections except, and then it has exceptions. I'm wondering whether content that's partially derived from AI would fall within that? Or is this, okay, it's nuanced, but like you could imagine a Hollywood script that is partial, and I think there are discussions around this, right? That's partially generated by AI, but then finalized by traditional script writers. Are we going to not house that movie?
That's a very specific question. I will, here's, here's my sort of thought, right? And, and some of this is, you know, these are the general principles. This may sort of get operationalized by management and staff, like as those kinds of things come up, right? My initial reaction to that is the, the Copyright Office, if, if you, if, if AI is the author of a book, the Copyright Office will not let you register it because it's not a work of human expression. And I think that's probably a standard that if you put me on the spot right now and say which should be, that's what I would say. But if you are using AI to assist you, if there is expression and creativity in how you go about using it, then maybe you can get copyright protection. And I think that is a starting point is maybe how I would look at that is, I don't think we're going to say authors need to like sign something that say, I didn't use any AI at all. But there is this, the, the impetus is, is there has been a problem specifically on Hoopla, getting flooded with just AI-generated slop that is just people just churning out, not people. I mean, people using AI to churn out a lot of very low quality stuff just to get it into the system and generate money. And so that's what I think we want to be kind of watching out for is, is that kind of thing.
Sure, okay.
But very good question.
I think that's a fair, fair response. I in principle agree with that. Okay, second question is, don't get harder, make it easier. Does our library exclusively use free versions of AI tools? Or do we also have paid versions that are used by the library?
I think the answer is anything we're using right now is free versions. Does any Kate or Julie, do you know? I mean, free in that, I think it's, Google made it man, they upcharge you in the account, but they made it mandatory that you have it. So it's basically like they raised the fees and make it free. So I suppose that we're paying for because we have no choice.
There's a concern about.
I would say included in existing subscriptions would be.
There you go.
So there, there's a statement about the potential for confidentiality violations, especially but not only true for free versions of AI tools. So that's what, that, that statement was what prompted my thought.
Right.
If we're, my, my understanding from my own workplace, and I'm not on our AI committee, but, and I have no expertise in this area at all. But what I was told was we deal with confidential information all the time. Executive conversation before it's publicly reported is quite sensitive material. So there's conversations around like, can we just put a bunch of data into a system and then have it do the analytics for us, right? And there's, the answer is no, if, if it can't remain confidential. And my understanding is there are versions of AI systems that are a closed ecosystem.
That is correct. They sort of live on a server and are not, you're not actually giving anything, say, to OpenAI. You're just, it's, you're just taking the model, putting it into your own systems and operating within your own system.
Right. So in that world, an HR matter or a, a social worker's interaction with someone else, someone or whatever, wouldn't necessarily breach the confidentiality, but we're not using that type of AI software. That, or system. Is that fair?
I think that's correct.
Okay. So I think the statement's correct and I don't have a problem with it. I was just wondering, trying to understand the contours of this confidentiality issue.
It's, it's also sort of, it, this is meant to be sort of broader principle. So in the future, there could come a day where we start acquiring some paid versions of things for people to start understanding them or using them. If that day comes, we'll not need to modify this document to adjust that. So that was kind of the. So that was kind of the idea of saying.
It's a living document.
Yes, yeah, you could say it's a living document.
Okay. Last question, and we can get to my formatting. Should, should the, okay, so there's a statement in the middle of this that I like a lot. So, but as a library, we should avoid using AI in ways that harm authors and other creators. I'm wondering whether that statement, some version of that statement should fall, should be more prominent and should be in the general statements about the role of libraries. No, okay.
I didn't have, I mean, I think that the idea was that the role of libraries would be more about external facing things and the use of AI at DGPL would be more about our internal use. And what this point was sort of getting at, and this is, I should have said this before, but just so everyone knows, I represent news publishers in copyright cases against AI cases. So you'd be entitled to say, well, maybe Matt's a little bit biased about that. I don't think that that plays its way into anything I've said or done here, but just in the interest of disclosure, should have said that earlier. So thanks for the opportunity to do that. The idea here is just to be thoughtful that, you know, if you do a Google search and you click on a link and it takes you to a website, well, the person who took the time and effort and spent the money to make that website has the opportunity to monetize that to, so they can continue doing what they're doing. And for the most part, AI searches, they're not even really searches, but if you, if you get a, you make a prompt, you, and you get an answer, you're not, you're not getting, that's not happening. It's, you're never getting to that site. So that author, their works are basically being used, but they're not being compensated anyway for that. The point of this was just to, to be cognizant of that. It, it's not to say therefore you can't use AI. It's to say, just like the environmental harms and some of these other things to say, like, be thoughtful about that. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I agree with you. That's it. Okay, so I'm formatting like we use all caps and then, and then, I don't know, just like environmental critical thinking. Can we like bold these things so it's easier to read?
I would entertain a motion to bold those. We'll, we'll take it under advisement.
Caitlin is the guru of all things formatting and therefore, and has not yet taken a stab at this document. So it went in just the way it came to us.
You agree with you.
Let's see what AI thinks about the format.
No.
Yes, this, for the final version, Caitlin, if you would be kind enough to put it through your close side.
Absolutely. It's like a game for me.
She's like, let's go.
All right. Anything else on this subject?
Well, just another general statement.
Sure.
You know, I'm in the music business, which involves creativity, respect for creativity. Creativity is a product in effect. And the question is, does AI have creativity? And it's, it's a whole lengthy conversation, but when we're talking about the potential harms of AI, creativity jumps out pretty fast to me because, you know, AI can write a song. AI can perform a song. AI can write a book. We've talked about that, you know? And that not only stifles creativity, it takes away jobs. I mean, there are all kinds of levels to this. Now, I'm just not, you know, I made my love, living in the computer business for a long time. And I'm not suggesting that AI be ignored or, or, or stigmatized or maybe illegal or something in the first place, we can't do that, it won't happen. But I really appreciate the proactivity here to try to get ahead of the curve a little bit looking at some of these things because these issues are real and they're going to get more real by the month.
They are, and, and I'm envisioning that this is a thing we'll continue to think about and continue to evolve this over time. But you're correct. The idea was to get out in front of this and, and be proactive and potentially kind of be a resource to other libraries who are trying to figure out these, these issues as well. So I was glad we were all able to do this.
But the good news is we've got some people that are looking closely at it and who are beginning to understand it and can lead us through, through this jungle zone. Thank you.
Okay, we have one more item of new business. It's also a discussion item that we'll vote on next time. It's library closings and holidays. Julia, you want to walk us through that?
All right. So this came out of, this is a recommendation from our equity advisory team. They were looking at, as you know, our compensation philosophy says that we prefer to be sufficiently above median of the local library competitor market to attract and retain staff. And one of the things that our equity team found was that we are currently in the bottom 10th percentile for holidays. They looked at holidays, floating holidays and personal days. A lot of libraries will use, give personal days for people to use for holidays that their library is not closed. Some will give floating holidays. And so we aggregated those to really give us a, a more apples to apples look at what our fellow libraries were doing and what they came up, what they looked at. We were between, depending on how you slice and dice the information, we were somewhere between three and four and a half days below the, where that average would be. So they have put together this proposal. It includes four paid staff holidays, which would be Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Juneteenth, the day after Thanksgiving and New Year's Eve Day. We not only looked at libraries, we also looked at the Village of Downers Grove and our regional library system, couple of others to kind of give us a, a sense of where we were. And also they have proposed one early closing, which would be the day before Thanksgiving, proposing that we close at five o'clock on that day. That would not be a paid closing. We already do that, actually right now, that's what we do on New Year's Eve Day. We close at five o'clock instead of our usual nine PM. So they are asking to implement this for our 2026 holiday closings. It is coming to you at this time because we generally pass that closing calendar in October or November of every year. So we're giving you some time to think about it, talk about it. And I do want to let you know that there is a dissenting staff opinion on particularly the day after Thanksgiving. And I'll tell you why, and some of you might be able to guess. The day after Thanksgiving is the annual tree lighting ceremony in downtown, put on by our downtown business association and the village. The library has for quite a few years participated in that by holding what we call the gingerbread storytime. And so that is a large storytime event for folks to come out before the tree lighting ceremony. It is also the downtown business association does the gingerbread man scavenger hunt throughout, throughout the Christmas season from that day all the way through Christmas. And the library is the place where you pick up your prizes. And so that is the first day that all of those scavenger hunt things are out. And a lot of people like to come and do the scavenger hunt, do storytime at the library and then head over to the tree lighting. So as I said, there, there are dissenting opinions on this, so I, I just wanted to bring that up to you. The alternate that the dissenters proposed was to perhaps close at five PM on that day also because the tree lighting is traditionally at four forty-five PM. And so all of our gingerbread events are generally done by about four fifteen, giving all the parents of Downers Grove time to get those kids to the restroom, get their winter gear on and over to the train station for the tree lighting by four forty-five. So I just wanted to let you know about the dissenting opinion on that.
What's, if I may, what's the, the response that, what's, what's the reasoning behind closing on that data?
So we have, the Village of Downers Grove closes on two, for two holidays that the library does not. And so those are Martin Luther King Jr. and the day after Thanksgiving. And so we have, as you know, in recent years, been really trying to make sure that we're in alignment with what the village does. And so that was part of the rationale. We also found that a significant number of our fellow libraries are also closed on that day.
And the, the gingerbread event, is that a large, is there a lot of attendance for that?
Hundreds of people.
Okay.
And that day before Thanksgiving, Julie, is a hard day to staff?
Both the day before and the day after are traditionally very difficult days for staffing, so.
I'm not trying to operate the library here. I, just an idea that came in my mind, is there any way, I mean, that event starts, begins at like three or two or something in the afternoon on, on, I don't know, some people call it Black Friday. But the, that event in downtown Downers Grove happens to be one of my favorites. I mean, kids of all ages and hundreds of people, thousands of people gather around the train station for the lighting of the Christmas tree and the parade from the library to that train station led by the high school band and stuff. I mean, it's, it's small town glee. And I would, I would really hate to see us lose that, that, that storytime period. But do we have to be open all day to do the storytime?
Another alternative would be to treat it like a Sunday and be open one to five.
Yeah.
We could, we could also, if treating it like a Sunday, our Sunday hours are currently time and a half for staff.
But then would, under the current thinking, would you need to find another? I mean, that would be a, an early closing, but that could qualify as a fourth day?
It would still put us within the realm, like I said, depending on, on which, which grouping of libraries you're looking at, it's between three and four and a half days. So even if we just did the three, we would be much closer.
As I say, I'm not trying to run the library. That's, that's your job. I'm just trying to understand the thinking a little bit. And for the purpose of the audience, our library staff surveyed well over a hundred other libraries and have a spreadsheet that shows what holidays they honor and what, how many, and how many floating holidays and how many personal days off. There was a lot of research went into this.
We asked over a hundred, we got about 80 responses total.
And libraries help each other on these things. You've got 80% return. That's amazing.
Well, so I, I support this change. I, I think it's a good idea. I think the question I have is if we didn't change the day after Thanksgiving to a paid holiday, is there another day that could be substituted for that? And sort of another question would be, what's the distribution of paid holidays across the year? Cause my, my firm's not, we build time, like, they don't want us to be out of the office. And so my experience is it's kind of like, it's heavily weighted towards the end of the, the year. And so it's really hard to get through the first half of the year sometimes because you just, unless you're taking your own personal time off or vacation time or whatever you want to call it. So maybe having something that's earlier in the year makes sense.
Yeah, there is no clear, other than the, these four, these were really the, the ones that kind of rose to the top for us. I think using that rationale, Nathan, I would say that probably President's Day would be the next.
Okay. Next question is more of a philosophical question for the board. Should we be moving from below market to above market? Like three, four days is basically putting us at market. And a sort of interrelated question I asked Julie by email and we talked. What is the experience of libraries with 15 or more paid holidays like that? Are they getting pushback from their communities? Is there any lessons to learn from that, employee reactions and so on? Cause to me, this is a retention tool.
First, the first half of that, I think in my mind is, is, is pretty simple. First of all, our strategic plan, our, our, our practices and so forth is to stay a little bit above the curve of all libraries in order to hire and retain the best possible people to staff our five star library. And so I don't mind being a little bit ahead if that's because then over time you fall behind anyway. But clearly we're pretty far behind. We're in the 10th percentile currently and I'm a little bit surprised that that hasn't come up to bite us already because we have a loyal staff, but in order to maintain that level staff, the HR term is retain. We need to stay up to date on those issues that, I mean, somebody has an alternative when they're looking for a job in a library. And we have a great library, but we need to keep our benefit level appropriately leveled so we can get good people.
One of the offsetting factors for that is particularly our vacation time for part-time staff and for staff that are not in library, that are not in librarian level to managerial to admin level staff. We are, we do have a slightly more generous policy than most, most libraries for full-time, non-professional staff and for part-time staff. So there is a little bit of an offset there.
Yeah, that was going to be another one of my points. So you kind of have to look at this holistically, look at the paid holidays, but also personal days and vacation days. And I know in the stats that you provided, it was paid holidays and personal days, but not vacation days, right? And so that sort of balances things out a little bit. So we could go to maybe 14 days and still on a whole, if you add in vacation days where it's a more employee friendly policy, then be above market as, consistent with our compensation philosophy. But I, I personally don't think we should go to 13. Whether we find a different day for, you know, day after Thanksgiving, that seems to have some merit. But, but I, I don't think, I would not support eliminating that day and not replacing it with another day.
Yeah, I mean, I, my reaction here is I, I understand why we would want to sort of conform with the village's day off the day after Thanksgiving, but I hadn't realized until now, shame on me, that there was a big, you know, that, that there was the gingerbread event. And I, my reaction is I, I would really hate to, for the public to lose that. I do like the idea of treating it like a Sunday because I think that would then, people could have the morning off after Thanksgiving. I think that's meaningful. So four hours, treat it with the same pay as a Sunday. And then maybe do like a, either pick another day or would it be feasible to just add a floating holiday? Or add a vacation day or something like that?
It would probably be easiest, the way that we do our PTO currently would probably be easier to add a personal day than to add, because we currently don't have anything categorized as a floating holiday.
Got it.
We gave personal days instead.
So it's just, it's a day you can take off for any reason you want.
The floating holiday conversation becomes a little bit like people don't want to take it because they're worried about taking it. So the, I think the wording somehow became confusing.
Yeah.
So personal somehow became easy.
Yeah.
I don't know why, but it did.
So my, my initial reaction would be to, to make it a half day on the day after Thanksgiving, do the time and a half and add a personal day as the kind of offset for that. Any reactions to that?
One point about the personal day though, there's a statement that says paid closures. One point about the personal day though, there's a statement that says paid closures rather than additional personal days allows for staff to be off at the same time, which promotes fairness. I'm kind of paraphrasing. And that was something that I think came up in the equity advisory team. So essentially, if, if you have a personal day, then all the staff has to coordinate with one another and someone has to sort of cover for another person. And that could create inequities over time. Like more senior people maybe taking days are more desirable than other day, you know, other, other staff members don't want staff to resent one another. So something to think about.
Yeah. But in getting to four days, if we do three paid holidays and one personal day, you kind of balance that out a little bit anyway.
And we already have personal days.
Yes, we do. We have, everybody gets three.
Well, obviously we're balancing all of these things. We're talking about taking care of our employees and so forth. We also want to take care of the general public who uses our library. And when we close, nobody can use it. Nobody knows that better than you guys, though. You know, I mean, does anybody come to the library on the day after Thanksgiving except to the?
Well, gingerbread storytime for sure.
Except for that.
But after that evening?
But you know better, you know that better than any, any of us, actually. So I urge you to make a recommendation that we can follow. Yeah.
I mean, that's a conversation that we had, that, that Thanksgiving Eve, people are either traveling or getting ready for family already. Christmas Eve, our people are, the same thing. I think a lot of those Eve days, people are either traveling already or, or they're with whoever they're going to be with. So I think that's a, those seem to be easy days to, you know.
To make these changes.
To make, yeah. And as far as Juneteenth goes, I think that I've been commenting on that every year. And so I'm really happy that, that we are putting that on. I know that some years it's fallen on Rotary Fest. And so we've just been able to be like, oh, we're closed. But I think it's, I like that we're saying that we're closed. If you vote on that.
And Dave pointed out to us that it will not fall on Rotary Girl Fest again until something like 2030, something.
Twenty thirty-one. Ask me why I know that.
Because Dave will still be running the entertainment at Rotary Girl Fest in 2031.
I, I would just echo Bernally on Juneteenth and, and the other days as well. Like I, I'm totally behind all the, all the other days. It's just the day after Thanksgiving, I think we should tweak.
All right. Any general guidance on what you want to see in the proposal coming back for next month? Do we prefer the one personal day or do we prefer something like President's Day, a, a different holiday?
It's, it's tough because it's, you know, I think that the concept behind retention and providing employees with the best benefits is to then turn around and benefit the public. So I guess my question, like, you know, I'm trying to think back to when my kids were younger and when I needed them to go somewhere on a cold February day. You know, like what is, I mean, I know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but like, what is the turnout for those days? Like I, I don't feel like people are really traveling for President's Day. Is that, is, is it a necessary day for people to have somewhere to go?
It varies. All of these, you know, any, anything that's basically a bank holiday or a school holiday, we will get a large number of phone calls of, is the library open today? And so, you know, it's, I know we're traditionally open on those days, some of them.
Well, here again, I don't feel as competent to make that decision as you are suggesting I should be because on one hand, the library is not closed for the public. But it's much easier to schedule staff that way because the library is closed. If we have a PTO, a personal time off day or a floating holiday, either one, it means we have to shuffle the staff to cover the vacancy for that one person. And I don't feel comfortable making that choice, frankly.
I can take this back to the equity advisory team and ask them which they prefer. Looking at the data, looking at our attendance and all of those things. And so I will move forward with the three days as proposed, Martin Luther King, Juneteenth and New Year's Eve. We will figure out if that's going to be President's Day, a different day or a personal day. And then also we will include the treating the day after Thanksgiving like a Sunday.
All right. And I think I, at least me and probably others too, in terms of that President's Day or what, I think, I'm going to largely defer to your judgment and management's judgment on kind of which one makes the most sense operationally. I don't really have strong feelings, you know, about that.
Yeah.
The last thing I was going to say, adding to that is, and the day before Thanksgiving is going to close at five, right?
Yes, yes.
That was part of this proposal.
Thank you.
I have a.
And I'll be there between three and five that day.
Yes.
As David told me, I'm there. I go to the library. I'm like, well, then you go to the library. This is for the board, and I'm just saying this and it's, doesn't mean, I'm just asking. Is it possible that we, could we do this sooner? Could we start that schedule? Could we try that schedule this year? Like, could we, could we see if that's possible? I mean, could we try this year to have that day after Thanksgiving, making it a Sunday? Could, I mean, I know the schedules, we voted on it last year, but I'm just asking, I'm putting, putting that out there. Some of those Christmas Eve or, I mean.
But I'd like the admin implications of that, if there are any.
Well, if, especially if we're treating the day after Thanksgiving, the biggest thing is that the discoveries newsletter will go out before this is voted on. So we, we won't be able to advertise that we would only be open from one to five that day. Yeah, you can't fight the newsletter schedule. I'm sorry.
That's the word. Yeah.
So that, that is part of the reason that we did want this to start in 2026.
Got it.
That's good, Rachel.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on this subject? Okay. We, do we have any, I don't think we have any unfinished business, anything I'm missing? Okay. We do not have an executive session, so we are therefore adjourned. Thank you, everyone.